Twenty Town Planning Commission, please come to order. I'd like to welcome everyone here this evening. Please stand to the pledge of the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible, liberty and justice for all.
Let the records reflect that all commissioner members are present. Commissioner members should have received the draft minutes of September 30th, 2024. Is there any corrections or additions to those minutes? Hang on just a second till I get them. Okay. Okay, I want to entertain a motion for exception.
I move that we accept the September 30th.
Is our second?
Second.
Okay, motion made by Brown, second by Myers. Any further discussion? All those favor of the motion to approve the minutes of September 30th, 2024, signify with a say an aye?
Aye.
Those likewise? Carrie, thank you. Delegation in action items. On the agenda tonight, Twenty Town Elementary School, pre-kindergarten and kindergarten addition, final site plan presentation. And shouldn't that be approval?
No, sir.
Pardon me?
No, sir. They were preliminary plan approved on... August 26th. So they're presenting, but they're very close. I mean, for an addition, I don't know what you're missing except for maybe the responses from Architect on the CDM Smith, last CDM Smith letter.
Yeah, I don't know if they've received the final, final comments from your subcontractor for the site.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was close.
Stand by yourself?
I'm sorry, James Marks Supervisor, Construction Carroll County Public Schools. But they're very close and they have, they've had no contentious discussions or anything. So I sound, it sounds like it's any hour now that they'll be, you know, you know, sending their final approval for that.
So hopefully in November. But in any case, just a final, final site plan presentation with no changes.
Correct. In the county comments, we've had no issues either on the county side.
Yeah, these are like just technical comments on the county.
Right. Cover sheet tweaks, things like that.
So is that why we got preliminary drawings this time instead of the final plans?
Well, I, I thought they'd say final, but because that's what you guys were...
Yeah, Austin probably wasn't sure that he should put final on that when he, and he went away to his honeymoon. Otherwise, he'd be here tonight to answer for that.
He takes some vacation.
So he actually, yes, he does, yeah. He, he needed to go.
Was it final that you guys submitted to county?
Oh, yes.
Last month?
We already submitted, yes.
Yeah, I was surprised when I saw the preliminary on there.
Yeah, it shouldn't be. It should be for final. But we'll, we'll come back at a month or so with all those documents fixed with that, with the comments. If you guys are okay with that.
Does anyone have any comments?
Not at this time.
Anything from the floor, from the county? All right, Mr. Marks, thank you very much.
No problem, thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Good seeing you all.
Take care.
Thank you, thank you.
Jim, if we could talk early next month, around the 5th or the 8th or something like that. Thanks, sir.
I saw that coming.
It is kind of dark in this corner, but...
All right. Coordinates none. Daryl, for your, for your report.
So is everybody liking the font on that?
Yes. Thanks to Bill, I can read it.
What? The magnifiers, they are, they are pretty cool.
Oh, yeah, now that we all have our little magnifying glasses that we got from, yeah. It's in my, in the briefcase.
So we would even agree to make the fonts larger and use the back of the page, too.
So there's some new technology I'm going to share with you guys. And our IPI is awesome. So I, it's been pointed out to me that you can print both sides, which, which can make the font larger. I'm trying to say paper, because I go through probably as much paper as anybody. But in any case, yeah, so anyway. All right. Been pretty busy. Director Mish and I met earlier in the month with someone who's interested in bringing a sit-down restaurant into, into the city. That is what's happening at the Thunderbolt Bowling Alley now. In, in the new year, they're going to start getting serious on the renovations to increase the restaurant. Also reducing some of the duck bin lanes, moving around their arcade. But in any case, that's going to be a place where I was told you can, you can sit down and have a steak here in town.
So this, what you have listed, is this another one or is this the bowling alley one?
No, this is another one. But I'm just, just, you know, the bowling alley, I'm going over their prints now. But, but yeah, and then for more fun, there was another person that contacted us about a sit-down restaurant.
Downtown?
No, no, sit-down restaurant someplace. Yeah, sitting, you know, not drive-through, not fast food. So that's pretty cool.
Tablecloth, right.
What's that?
With a tablecloth.
With tablecloth.
Oh, yeah, yeah. No paper plates.
No, okay.
So there, there's a study that is required by MDE, not a study, but an action where the city is to identify what type of plumbing is coming into a dwelling. I don't know a whole lot about it, but long story short, we're very heavily in compliance on that. This is a percentage rate that MDE requires that we supply to them. And then there's, I think there's going to be another set that we're have to go out and do further examination. But it's pretty cool. The city, Public Works has a, and that's where, that's where, that's where it becomes valuable to keep your employees because the tenure here is just unbelievable. Most of those guys will tell you where every valve in the city is. I mean, that's, you know, from the younger guys to the guys that have been here two decades. Yeah, and when you're, when you're trying to stop damage from something coming out of that kind of force, faster the better. So in any case, we're working with Arrow on that. There's a grant that DBW got to help with that. Another thing, I just want to throw this out there. Every plan that I have down to my office is being scanned by Arrow into a, into the system for electronic images, every one of them. So it's, it's a challenge. The people from Arrow, that's got to be heck of a job. You know, and I'm hoping to never bring back all room of those prints and it expels itself. That'd be horrible. But, but yeah, it'd be nice that, you know, going down the road, I, I'm contacted, you know, multiple times a year. Hey, where's the water and sewer at for this project? Where's, you know, this will make it a lot easier, a lot easier.
Question on that, is that, as they scan the documents in, are they geospatially relating those so that when, you know, if there's a water valve shown on a plan somewhere, that we can relate that to a latitude and longitudinal space? You know, on a grid somewhere that we can actually go and find it, like, yeah, that water valve there in this street is at this location, X number of feet from the intersection or whatever. Or even with, like I said, with a GPS coordinated location where you could, even if it was buried, if it was paved over, you would say, okay, well, the plan says it's here. I don't see anything, but this is where the GPS says it should be. Let's take a, let's take a metal detector and see if we find anything, you know? And you wouldn't even know to look for it unless that plan told you that. So I just wonder if that has been, if that's being incorporated in that. Do you have any idea, Jim? Do you have, do you know?
Well, we, the city does have a map that shows water, sewer and stormwater management rather close GPS-wise, it's down in my office. A lot of the prints have on there the elevations for manholes and this, that and the other, as well as the lines size, drawing and valves. I don't know that, if it's for everything, I mean...
Yeah. Well, I was just asking, because I know that there's technology out there that's way ahead of just simply scanning the plans in and having a PDF of the plan. But I don't know what's being, what they're utilizing. I was just curious. I was just asked the question because I'm curious.
I'm not sure of the extent that Arrow is geolocating everything. I know that is a component of, of what they're helping with, but the city is trying to chip away at geolocating manholes, water valves and so on. So, but it's, it obviously is a pretty big task to try to go back and catch.
Right, it's a lot of information.
And, and we've, we've had some, some challenges. We've, we've tried to use, we did manhole inventories or have been doing manhole inventories for the last couple of years and used, used cell phones to try to geolocate them, but we're finding that they're not as accurate. They don't seem to agree with, with other...
Other data.
Other, right, other data. So we've, we've invested in some equipment, but are still kind of in the learning curve to do that. But we may have to actually go back out and kind of update what the cell phones told us with the new equipment. But work in progress.
Yeah, I, I know just in the last 20 years, we, 20 years ago, I was on the cutting edge of doing some of that design work with stuff that had like three meter accuracy. And we thought that was hot stuff, you know? Now that's, that's like, you know, that's like throwing a snowball against a wall, you know? Now it's a whole lot more accurate than that, so.
City staff, CDM Smith, met with the developers of stores today. I'm happy to say that I believe we've come to an agreement on the, there's these sewer main out on that site. And as their bad luck would have it, there's a retaining wall that's needed. And that retaining wall was just too close to where that sewer pipe was going to be. So they made some small changes to, to the, to the site plan, basically red line. Whereas instead of having two-way flow on the site, it'd be one-way. So they're, they're probably be back in here next month. And hopefully we can, you know, get that thing, it's been, what, over a year and a half? Yeah, so, yeah, that, that site was a challenge with all things MDE and a pond, and I think a seasonal creek, maybe. Anyway, it was a mess. So hopefully that comes to conclusion. It's not on my report, but there is a public works agreement in Clara's office that she'll be sending around for signatures on the sheet site for the stormwater management. We'll finally get that squared away. That'd be nice. So with all these things, when we get all the administrative things that we need, the public works agreement, that type of thing, they have to, they have to send a letter saying that they want to be refunded their escrow, which is, you know, five grand normally. And, and then once we make sure that all, there aren't no invoices floating around because you don't want that. You know, hey, can we have some of that money back? We'll get that squared away. Now to come off the agenda. Still working on the two of APCO, well, that's not really true. I want to get back on the two of APCO projects that are out there, the old ones, and figure out what's, what's, what's needed there. I mean, we know that they're done and there's no invoicing, but we just need to figure out what the administrative paperwork needed is. And that's, it's not obvious, so I'll get back onto that soon. I put in the package there a, the contract for Arrow. So in hearing that the, there was a little bit of the challenge with the access for the Frederick Street side of the new, new park expansion, that you, you see that invoice in there, that proposal in there. It's a lot of the money to try to figure that out. So I understand that things have changed, but the mayor and city council were good enough, gracious enough to make this project complete in the whole by keeping that access coming off of Frederick Street. I think it's a huge need. I envision that park, if I may, to be one of the nicer parks in the multiple county area. And that really does, you know, parents want to bring their kids to nice parks. That's all there is to it. And that could be a revenue maker for, you know, the Parks Department. So...
Talking about Memorial Park and 194, is there any way that exit could drop down to the entrance going into the old Agway? I mean, you're only feet away, you know?
Right.
A hundred feet or less?
Yeah.
Could, could any way that something could be looked into?
Well, Chairman, I, I'd imagine it could be, but the engineers, Arrow is saying that they, they understand what is needed. But we're going to find that out soon. That's be part of, you're, you're going to hear about that as well, what they did figure out. But yeah, and that's, that's a great thought, yeah.
Is that part of the state's difficult, the, the current state consultant's difficulty with the access plan for coming out on 194? That there are too many entrances too close together there? Do we know if that's part of the issue?
I didn't read that. It was more so sightline and I think, and, and I don't know what they're going to be able to work out for the sidewalk. Yeah, that's going to be one of the wonders of the world. That's a big deal.
Jim, you had a comment?
I, I think there's a small water course that, that State Highway is, is looking at as far as the stormwater management aspect of, of that, that new entrance. So that, I think that's been the, the challenge with it, as I think has been shared previously. But State Highway contracts, consultants to review, review these plans, and they switched consultants during the process. So Arrow had responded to the initial group of consultants' comments, had addressed them all and responded. And then a new, a new consultant group came in and had a whole different list of comments. So thus the, the additional level of work because our contract with Arrow specified a certain number of back and forth exchanges for addressing comments. But getting back to the, the initial problem, I believe it's a stormwater management issue. And the idea of sharing access with those two properties, the former Agway and the medical complex, is kind of, was kind of a Plan B. We, we weren't sure that State Highway was going to consider access at the piece we own. But obviously, we'd like to keep it on our own property if, if possible.
It's a thought and it's, it's there.
Yeah, no, it's a good thought.
Something's over there and they've got easements coming in and out, so...
Yeah, just you'd have to get an easement on the private property to come across with the, you know, with the road back to the park.
And we, right. If, if need be, we would have had those conversations, you know, to try to get an easement or perhaps the idea of a, a land swap with the owners of the former Agway property, where, you know, we would take X feet between the two properties and, and, you know, give them the piece that we own to the north of them. But, you know, again, State Highway was willing to consider the access point, so we didn't need to involve other property owners.
As long as something's in motion. All right.
And then lastly, and we're talking with the Cluth letter when we get down to the comp plan. But just a, just something I came across, I'd share with you about lighting patterns. You know, just something to be aware of. I mean, it's, you know, lighting is a huge deal, light trespass. It's a huge deal when it comes to site plans. And that's all I have on the show, I have questions.
I've had some questions asked about across, the property across from where the Tony Supply, the hardware store. I understand that was sold. Is that correct?
The last I heard, yeah, I believe there's, I think it was bought by the gentleman who owns Tony Supply.
Yeah, I had, I had heard that through the grapevine also.
And if you guys are ever curious about that, if you go onto the Tony Town webpage and you see GIS.
Yes.
Click on that, accept the cookies, all right? I don't know what that means. But accept them. And then you, you, you can go in, so you just cursor around Tony Town. And if you go to, if, if you identify like the elementary school, click on it. And you see Sstat, click on that. It tells you who owns that property. All right, so it's just that simple. It takes seconds.
That information like out there off of Antrim would be updated that quick if it was just...
Yeah, it's pretty quick. It's not, it's not days, but it's, it's not, you know, months normally either. So it's been pretty quick.
So the slowdown on progress on that isn't because of us, it's the developer?
Of course, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so I, I've heard nothing about what we call Antrim South. But North's still, still moving along, you know, where the supply area is going to be. So Rara and I did want to come in there, that was the, I think that they did, I think they did present. That's a, that's a challenging piece of land. And to get things to that site is not cheap either.
Just had a question on, so on Garnet Ridge. So their concept plan was approved pretty near a year ago, right? So they have to be, they have to be here next month, is that correct? 12, 12 months?
They've, they've submitted their preliminary plan already.
Yeah.
Oh, so that, what they gave us, that, that counts as being submitted? Okay. Okay.
Any other questions for Daryl?
I have. What is Cunningham Acres lots 1 to 3?
That is the, what is now the APFC parking lot.
Okay.
What was it again, I'm sorry?
That's the APFC parking lot.
There's three lots there.
Okay. Just never saw, I don't think I remember seeing it referred to in that way.
Did I miss, or did you want to make a comment on 180?
No, other than my laws for the grading decider in my office that you signed today.
Okay.
The mayor designed, CDM Smith, I need their signature as our engineer. But yeah, they're...
Just so the rest of the commission...
Yeah, okay.
All right. Chris, anything else?
No, I think that's it for now.
We'll, we'll double check the language and the code on, on Garnet Ridge. I see Daryl's note about the formal presentation of it, so we'll make sure that if that needs to happen, that it happens.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
No other questions? We'll move on to, any comments from Jay?
No.
Any comments from Tiffany? I see you moved from the back road up closer to the front.
Good evening. So for us, there's a lot going on down at the county in planning right now. We have the housing study is going to the Planning Commission for recommendation review and comment on the 6th. The evening of the 6th is an evening meeting for us. And then Mosaic, the consultant, will present the recommendations and, and try to incorporate any suggestions that the Planning Commission or Public at that time has. For text amendments, we have two that we're trying to respond to at state level. The Housing Expansion and Affordability Act that goes into effect on January 1st. We have now scheduled a public hearing to review the legislation that we are recommending. And then the solar site design requirements, again, there are, we don't allow solar facilities in Ag Zone, but there is at the state level, the Maryland Public Service Commission is approving a site plan perhaps. And then we will need to have, or hopefully have, site, site design requirements established when that happens, in case it does. So, because they can still, if the state approves it, they can still build it. But we just want some site guidelines in effect, even though we don't allow it. And then the DRA did get adopted on October 10th for the county. For the master plan updates, the website is now active. It's carol2035.org and there are two active surveys on there right now. And pretty much going through the process like, like you guys are. Any questions?
Questions or comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tiffany.
Business discussion on the comp plan 2025? Jim, you want to bring us up to how it looks?
So we're at about 340 surveys. It seems like something stopped. I don't know if it's the, the survey software we're going through. It seems like in a week's time, nothing's really, no great numbers have been added. I know the following things to be accurate. Last week, I got the call from Barb at St. Joe's. They wanted 50 copies of the survey, community survey. I got them down there, they had an additional 20. They were out of them after the end of festivities on Sunday. She called again today, I'm going to send down 40 more tomorrow. They are aware, and the world needs to know, that these, that study, the survey concludes on the November 8th. So whatever's out there, so... Mr. Cluth has been very busy. There's a six-page document in front of you guys. It basically is a, is a diary of where he's done, who he's talking, where he's been. I can't imagine the hours and time he's spent in this. Yeah, I, I just, a one-person army just trying to get it out there. So he sat here and took that, you know, heavily, hard about community involvement. So maybe we don't need 20 people in the audience, maybe we need one person like that. So it's, it's really amazing. I mean, I, you know, I know it affected his store hours and everything, but he was out there and greatly appreciated a lot of the business. I think 60-some businesses he, he went to and spoke to, you know, 64, 64, call it destinations. So you see Paul, please thank him.
I'm very much appreciative of Paul's efforts. And we were just, Tanner and I were just discussing how nice it is that we have somebody who has that kind of talent and interest and, and time and desire and, you know, and time seems to be the one thing a lot of us are mostly short on. But I'm, I'm glad to see that he's so actively involved. You know, hopefully he's more... Now is this, the, the respondents on, you list 407 respondents in this email you sent over. The electronic, the ones they've received?
The ones that are in, yes, the ones that have been received.
But that doesn't count what they've, what we have in terms of paper ones?
No, so the numbers that I, the numbers that Emily gave me is 434, I believe is for today, as of today, is what is in, is in the system. So there's, there's 17...
So we have 434 in the system now?
Yeah, there's 17 in my, my office, some of them scanned tomorrow. I don't know, some of you may have a couple laying around or whatever.
One in today, so...
Sorry?
I handed one in today, so...
Okay. So, yeah, I want to make sure we get them in there. So I'm hoping and praying in the next couple, three days, we, we, we see a bump because, you know, the people we talked to Saturday, Councilman Tillman was down there helping, city manager and I were there for the whole event. Good bit of activity. I was amazed by how many people from local towns, Littlestown, Union Bridge, were here, Amisburg, were here for this event. You know, I'd ask them, of course, you know, how'd you hear about it? Well, you know, we checked with neighbors, that kind of thing. So it's pretty cool, pretty cool. So we are rather interwoven here, you know?
People that were from Tony Town, and you said something about the survey to, to them. Did they already, did they already know about it? Have they already had done?
No, there was a lot of surprise. But there were a few that, that knew, a few that did fill out the survey. And, and, you know, the ones that said they didn't, we, you know, they took a hard copy or they scanned in the code. Yeah.
Anything else?
So on this sheet, it gives some of the tallies. It's a small snippet of what information is out there. Like of the 17 that are in my office, I was amazed by what people thought about the parks. A little surprised by that. I was amazed by how many people wanted to sit... I was amazed by how many people wanted a sit-down restaurant. I don't know what the term is, but something other than fast food and not paper plates. But there's a lot of desire for that. So it's ironic that the people have come in here for that, you know, the people that may put that together. So that's pretty cool, that they seem to know.
There's a couple of barriers to sit-down restaurants, one being commercial kitchen with a hood and event. You know, there's only a few, only one, actually, since they tore down the old Grandma Gems down there, that leaves only one empty restaurant space in town with a hood. So effectively, there's more than one person looking to put a restaurant here is a really great thing. It's just we may, you know, that may require some retrofits or, you know, you know, or to build a new space on a lot, so.
Yeah.
Just because the.
Half the shopping center is empty.
Yeah, well, that's, I would say, that might be, there's a good spot, it's kind of, I'd rather see one downtown here, but.
Yeah, yeah, well, they should get them open, I don't know what they're waiting on, but you know, it's a little.
Talk to the property owners.
So, but, but you know, they were looking at land and the possibility, maybe the shopping center, because it's, there it is. And a lot of times, as Chris knows, in the commercial world, if you're going to do a long-term lease, you know, the building owner sometimes works with you to make, to make it happen. So maybe there's some kind, you know, in-kind services there too.
Well, if they, if they will build it, we will come. Anything else on the comp plan before we move to our new business?
Moving back, old business, last month we talked about Huffman property. I think we ought to reconsider that and have turn-off lanes into that development. We have awful backups up around that circle every night. And why funnel a couple hundred houses down into, into the town to get to that? Why don't we get rid of the traffic before it gets into town?
Have you heard any more about the project, the Huffman property? Anything going to happen, anything in the horizon?
Well, other than the traffic study, I don't, I've not heard anything, I believe.
Well, we want to make sure we keep that door open.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because it does back up to the circle, from the square to the circle.
So this might be a dumb question, the traffic study they're doing? How are they, how are they doing gathering information if we don't know where it's going to be coming out of?
So those worries have not been taken off anybody's list, so that'd be, that'd be looked at as well, correct, Jim?
They, they are supposed to be considering some options that State Highway has not specifically said they would authorize. So they're looking at a number of different options as far as how the project is going to be accessed from either Sells Mill Road, how Sells Mill Road may be rerouted. You know, State Highway has not been particularly receptive to any point of ingress egress for the project off of 140 east of the roundabout.
Yeah, we said that.
Right. So. But, but it's still, you know, those options are still supposed to be evaluated in the study, even though SHA is saying we really don't like that, so.
Okay, I was just curious, you know.
Yeah, it does seem almost a little, you know, cart before the horse to be doing a traffic study before you have the concept. But, you know, I mean, this is, you know, accessed largely from a county road. And I know the county does like to get that traffic count, that traffic study started early in the process, I guess, because it can, you know, it can help inform some of the decisions on access.
Yeah, I was going to say, if there's, you know, if the traffic study indicates that you really can't access the project in any way, that, you know, it's good to know that early on before you invest a lot into it. You know, so it's, it would be, the question would be where, where it will come out, because I think a relocation to Sells Mill Road is probably going to be the option, but where does that tie back in? Does that come in at break iron and come down to the light at Chevron? Or does it come out to its own light at the existing shopping center? And, you know, what will, what will the state allow in that? Because you've already got the light at Chevron, are they going to allow a light there? You know, and then again, you're looking at backups down and around the circle, you know? And I've seen the circle backup, you know, 400 yards down the hill, down 140, so.
The developer is very interested, and they're, you know, continuing to push forward on, you know, getting some answers with the traffic study. So hopefully, you know, they won't walk away, hopefully this study will.
So what I heard was.
And with some options that are achievable.
Okay, all right, so there's going to be options, instead of just, okay.
The old gas station, is that still Tevis, right?
Tevis, right.
So how does that fit in? Do we have anything on how that fits in with the Huffman property?
Or behind it, right? Is that what you're thinking, or?
Well, I guess it all depends on what goes there. I mean, there's a big, there's a large area for a sit-down restaurant. And it's on a main drag.
Yeah, redevelopment of the Tevis property for a restaurant would be a really, that's a.
And I think it's large enough for parking, and I think, you know.
But it's two pieces, two parcels.
Front and back or side by side?
I'm not sure.
Front and back.
Front and back.
So Tevis goes all the way back to the first house on Amica Street.
I saw some stakes out there, I assumed that, is that where the property line? I saw some stakes out there the other day, just as a guess, is that where that property line might be on that front back?
I haven't noticed the property stakes, so I can't really.
Okay.
But it's, it's two parcels, front to back, you know, the second parcel is mostly just grass, you know, turf area. But it goes back to the older ranch house that used to be served by Wilson Avenue.
Woods.
So, right, so it goes, you know, back to about 60 feet from that house, I think.
So with the Huffman property, are they going to come and say, hey, I want to do a community village or something? Or, I mean, it seems like that's what everybody wants to do, at least the developers. And I guess I'm not sure what the application is, I mean, it reads that there's supposed to be an application that's presented, so I don't know what that process looks like.
The sketch plan that Daryl and I saw was for, for the residential portion was a conventional R10,000 subdivision.
Last two zonings, that has residential in the back and commercial up front?
Correct.
And that'd be the ideal location for that too.
Except for the access.
Yes.
Well, that's something for the state and county to work out, but that's still. There again, it seemed like we're putting all our stuff in one basket at that end of town. West End.
That's a tough, tough area.
Yeah.
Well, not only that, but that's where, you know, when you, you have a town of 8,000 people, everybody comes through that, that end of town. And that's why Sheetz is down there, that's why the shopping center is down there, that's why, you know, and that's why they want to put this development down there. You know, I would love to see, you know, on the commercial property at Garnet Ridge, something like what they're talking about at the front end of Huffman property. But the traffic numbers dissipate so much going through town, and then when you get to Frederick, there's enough traffic that turns off York and Frederick, so that by the time you go through, it isn't quite the volume of traffic, and it maybe doesn't make as much sense from a commercial standpoint to put a convenience store up there, because there isn't the traffic necessarily to support it, like there is down at the other end of town.
Well, if we correct the situation on Harney Road, that may ease things a little bit. People coming in and out of Harney Road onto 140. Because there's a lot of traffic that makes a turn on Harney Road, either coming into town in the morning or going out in the evening.
Yeah, they're going to Avapco to work.
That could be too, as long as they're working in town, that's still good.
Yeah.
If we see, I mean, we've heard some expression of interest for commercial development there, but just very, very preliminary. And of course, you know, there's an expectation that, assuming Mountain Brook Farms comes to fruition, you know, there could be some changes to the traffic pattern, and you're also going to have, you know, 400 more residences on that end of the city.
Right, that will change the balance.
So that, that may make commercial development.
Right, Mountain Brook and Garnet Ridge may be enough to change that balance.
Right.
Yeah.
You know, I still like the idea of, you know, one of the reasons to, that we annexed Tools Farm was to be able to get some control over what happens there. I'd still like to see Harney Road rerouted kind of through there and tie into the Mountain Brook exit, so that those two would tie together. Then later on down the line, once, after you cross the bridge on Harney, then you could veer off with the Worthington Boulevard. You know, just, again, that's just, you know, got the binoculars on, I'm looking way down the road with that, but we've closed ourselves out of so many things over the years, you know, to try to keep those kind of options open, I think is an important thing.
All right. We're still back on new business, anything? Go ahead. I was thinking, would it be a good idea sometime to have Jay Minch come in and talk to us a little bit, get his input on economic development in town? So want to make sure that all the groups, all the commissions and all that are on the same page. And would it be nice to have him come in and give us some input from his end of it? I'm just opening that up.
I think that would be good, was it a year ago he presented, gave us that presentation? And said.
That was awesome.
Said we should consider businesses before housing, that's what I remember.
Good memory.
Think about it, and if it's feasible, and he has some input.
I think it would be a good idea, I really do.
I'm curious as to what he's working on.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
We'll certainly have his input as we go through the comp plan, you know, update as well. So, you know, he's going to be one of those individuals that has some, you know, some input because of his role, so. But we can certainly invite him back in sometime in the not-too-distant future.
All right, anyone from the floor, sir, would you like to come forward? Any comments you'd like to make to us? Glad to hear whatever you have to say. All right.
Before we wrap up, I'd just like to say how much I enjoyed the Planning Commission conference. And, and how much I got out of that. I'm sitting here looking at eight pages of notes that I took during the conference. You know, talking, you know, I think one of my biggest takeaways is to be a little more inventive in our thinking about zoning. There's talk about form-based zoning as opposed to just use-based zoning, where you're more concerned with what the property looks like than what it, what's in it, you know, but with, obviously within, within limits. You know, and trying to be, you know, more, more flexible in terms of mixed uses, mixed-use properties, you know, where could we, where could, where would it make sense for a mixed-use property with first-floor commercial and residential above that, whether that's rental apartments or owned condos? Those, I think, are all really good things for us to think about and look at. The lot of discussion about affordable housing and accessory dwelling units. I'm not necessarily wild and crazy about accessory dwelling units, because I could see where that can go terribly wrong, but, you know, it's a lot to think about, and if we do not, if we don't consider affordable housing and the things that we do, the state will consider it for us. So we just need to be aware of that, and, you know, there are more things like House Bill 538 coming, so we just need to be ahead of those curves.
Dan, you have comments?
Yeah, sure, sure, I enjoyed the conference also. Not every class was outstanding, but it was, a lot of them were really good. It seemed to me like a lot of the, the planning commissions, the way, the way I perceived it, was the planning commissions were a lot more, a lot more proactive than what we seem to be. So I just, that was just kind of, I don't know, kind of interesting to me, the way, the way it was presented. The other thing that, I really enjoyed the, I think it was called the Nuts and Bolts of Planning presentation. Now, I don't have the slides yet, I asked them, they weren't able to post them, so I'm hoping to get them. But there were a few comments that she made in there that I need to verify what she said. But I think it's probably going to end up being a question I want to pose to Jay. Because the one thing that I remember was, she said if, if you're looking at a project and everything meets the code, you must.
Allow it.
Allow it.
Yes.
So there's no room for our personal opinion in there. So I'm a little bit uncomfortable with that personally, so I don't know. I mean, I have an opinion and I'd like to share it, so. So I would like to, I want to verify what the comment that she said in the slide, and then I'd like to ask your permission that we get a ruling from Jay or a description as to what that really means.
I was sitting, sitting with you on that one, and she said she was going to have those slides available.
I gave her my email address also.
Jay did cover that a few years back. I mean, if it, if it meets all the guidelines, that's where the given and taken comes. We'll allow this, but then we want greenlands, we want parks, we want this. It's a given-taken, if all things, and I, Jade had, we had that, what, I know, it was a couple of years ago. Jade brought that to our attention.
I mean, you can put stipulations on things.
Yes.
But you can't, you can't necessarily deny it, and you can't make the stipulations so onerous as to de facto deny it. Because you can be challenged on that also.
Right, so.
But that is good to bring that up again, too.
I would like, I'd just like to discuss it more, just to make sure we're.
I think regarding that, the successful approach is when we give the developer our feedback early on in the process, before the design is really completely nailed down and all the engineering is done, so that they can try to accommodate what we're asking for in, in the project. But, you know, back to the, I guess, crux of it, if something meets all the requirements to the letter of the code and we deny it, we are putting, you know, the city at risk. You know, so it is, and with the Board of Zoning Appeals, you know, that can be very challenging also, where you have a roomful of people who may oppose a particular variance or special, special exception, but they check off all the boxes and they do everything that the code requires of them. The Board of Appeals really is obligated, you know, as you guys are, to grant an approval, even though it may not be what you personally prefer. So it is, it is, you know, challenging to sit there and approve something that you may not really like. So I think, you know, just as a general rule, the earlier in the process that we can, you know, have the conversations with the developer and ask them to incorporate what we want or to remove what we don't want, the earlier in the process, the more likely they're going to be cooperative, because they want to get through the process, it's all about time for them. And, you know, if they know that they can do a few things to make you guys happy and save them two months of back and forth, they're probably going to do it. You know, as long as it's economically feasible. They just want to get through the process, and the quickest way to do that is to keep you guys happy, as well as the reviewers.
And that one conference, that one seminar we went to, that developer was there. He said, earlier, early on, it makes it a lot easier.
Yeah, I didn't agree with everything he said either.
I didn't either, but I'm just saying that it was, it was said more than once, you know.
But I thought, overall, I thought it was really good, so I do appreciate the town, you know, covering the bill for us to go. I had more than eight pages of notes.
I had trouble taking notes and paying attention at the same time. Bill, you have it?
I feel the same way, you know, I thought it was a very good seminar, all the seminars. Majority of the seminars were good, and, but very informative, and I'm glad we had the opportunity to be there and be part of the Tawny Town group.
I think maybe combining with the APA for the conference probably was a really good idea, I think.
Yeah, I think it was a much more, I thought last year's conference was really, was good, but I think that the breadth of things covered in this conference and the number of, of sessions was almost overwhelming in terms of the number of sessions, there were a lot of like, do I go to this one or this one?
It was great, too.
But the net, and the networking was fantastic.
You can't beat that, to hear other people, you know, going through the same issues.
Same issues.
Yep.
I thought it was neat, when we did the tour on Turf Alley, that when they first started that, they allowed. that, they allowed a hundred homes before they had more than one egress into the development. They've changed that. They're fifty, same as what we use now. So, it's good to hear that, you know, they're in line, we're in line with them, or they're in line, whatever. It's good that, you know, it works both ways. Barry, you have?
Yeah, it was a good seminar.
Okay. There again, I'd like to just say thanks to the town for allowing it.
Yes, thank you.
And ready for next year's.
So, question. Does anybody here where the next, um, M P C A may be?
They said not until January. They wouldn't put it out until January.
Oh, okay.
I'm asked to, we did ask.
Just in time for budget, okay. Well, it's important to know, because if it's distal, then we need to worry about lodging or what have you, and, and have, okay. So, yeah, I, I, I emailed Joe Griffiths to ask him about if he knew when, where it was gonna be, but.
I got a couple tents if we need to go lodging.
So, it, it was a good training, and unlike the previous two years that I've gone, there were more than a dozen, um, classes, which is great. So, going forward, you can always bank on the two, um, the, um, commissioner training, um, and then the Open Meetings Act training the first day. But I like how they split it up a little bit.
And by so many of us going to different ones, you know, we, we can.
Divide and conquer.
Divide and conquer. There you are, that's the way to go.
Historically, anything the state does, you, you'll see that later, um, available, um, as far as the material goes. I think, I think it's almost everything I've, I've.
Yeah, if you, did you download the app? The, the conference app?
No, that's what I, I did, I was too busy paying attention.
That was actually really nice.
Yeah, I down, I downloaded the app, and it was great, because it had the schedule and stuff on it. Um, and also through that app, you can then go back and, um, download the, um, presentations. So, if there's one you want to see, let me know. I'll, I have the app and I'll, I'll download the presentations.
I'm gonna put the app on his phone tonight.
All right. Anything else on the new business? Anything from the floor?
Chairman, just one more thing.
Yes, sir.
I think we're gonna leave the Love It, Fix It board up, um, for other meetings, the old Parks and Recs, maybe the Mayor's City Council. Um, that piece of artwork blew my budget, um, so.
You're gonna use it as much as we can.
Wear that baby out. So, um, long story short, um, there's posts that's gonna always be on the table, uh, until they're not, and then some pens, and then you just, you know, love it. I mean, it's, it's really neat, and I'm sort of copying off of, um, Tiffany, what you guys did for the housing study. Um, they put up, you know, these boards, and, you know, it's a, it's a great way of, of, you know, some people don't want to talk, you know? Somebody actually just, you know, just, I didn't speak a word to them and, and put up one of the, um, stickers that was there, so. Um, yeah, it's pretty neat. It's.
I think you should put the pens and the, uh, the paper closer to your board.
Yeah, I know. It's, it's, it's new, Dan. It's just right, it's how it comes.
He's working on it. He's working on it.
The work in progress.
In progress.
Yeah. All right. It's in the beta stage.
Yeah, beta stage.
For beta testing, yes.
Looking for a motion for a German.
So moved.
Motion made by Chris is our second.
Second.
Bill, second of the bill. What discussion, all in favor, seeing if I was saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, aye? Thank you. You got me on the.